And welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, February tenth. The time is six P M. And this meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. My mission under God includes all liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, our amendments from one twenty-two twenty-five, one twenty-three twenty-five, and one twenty-seven twenty-five were received. Any corrections, comments? Minutes will stand as submitted. Board and Committee update. Board Appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Appointment of Sarah Shepherd to an interim term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. As a Citizen at Large Representative, interim term expires January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Gulf Advisory Board. Appointment of Jim Tucker to a first term on the Gulf Advisory Board. Term will expire October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. City County Parks Board. Appointment of Aaron Madison to a first term on the City County Parks Board as a city appointee. Term will expire September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. City County I T N S Board. Reappointment of Gary Myers to a second term on the City County I T N S Board and as an I T Executive Citizen at Large. Term will expire January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-seven. Commissioners, comments, questions? Then I'll entertain, uh, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will, uh, move the board appointments as read.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consent Agenda. Release city, cities' interest in the utility easement located on fifteen-hundred Blaine Street. There is no presentation required, Commissioners. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Bid Award. Bid Award for the City of Helena Crosstown Connector Transmission Main Valve Replacement Project Number Twenty-two dash zero-one. Engineer Jamie Clark. Are you around? Yes. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
I would just like to present this bid award. This is a ARPA project. It's actually funded by D W S R F funds as matched to the rest of our ARPA funds. And the Crosstown Connector is a large, um, diameter transmission, water transmission main that crosses from about Williams Street out by the fort, out to the Missouri River Water Treatment Plant. It basically connects both water treatment plants and the tanks in the hills south of town. Uh, this is kind of one of those projects that used to keep me up at night. Uh, if, if it didn't get done, uh, the project is to add a bunch of valves that are currently inoperable that would result in quite a water loss and a, uh, problem if they were to have a break on the main. We received three bids and the lowest bid was three million dollars, give or take, from a local contractor, Hard Rock Road Building and Utilities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you, Engineer Clark. Commissioners, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you. I really excited that we're finally getting to this point because I feel like we've been talking about this for like two years, actually probably more than that, just since we've gotten the money. Um, can you tell, uh, tell us about the, um, timeline for completion of everything? And if there's going to be any experience that, anything the public experiences while things are being upgraded?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, we're going to do the project in four phases. Um, the first phase will probably start after high, high demand season next fall and also due to materials lead times, we're going to, um, complete that. And then the remaining three phases would be completed spring, the following year, fall the following year, and then spring the year after that. Um, there'd be minimal, minimal disturbance to customers because this is more of a transmission main, not a main with a bunch of services or water services on it. That being said, we often do discover things when we work on stuff like this that we didn't think were there. Um, but that's part of the project that's taken so long. It's just careful coordination of all those issues associated with it. The most likely would be the phase out by the airport.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to award the Crosstown Connector Valve Replacement Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Hard Rock Road Building and Utilities Incorporated, in the amount of three million nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Engineer Clark. Commission Proposes? Reporter of the City Attorney, Attorney Doctor.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor, uh, I've got a couple of reports, and with your permission, I'd like to invite Judge Peterson up to talk about, uh, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five Food for Fines event. And as you'll recall, the Commission approved that program last year as well.
You have the floor, Judge.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, for hearing about this event. We have it set up with Lewis and Clark County Justice Court as well. We are coordinating the same as we did last year, not last year, twenty-twenty-three is the last time we did it. We do it once every other year. Um, so participants, um, anyone who has fines or fees within the municipal court and/or justice court can come in. Um, there is a max amount of a hundred dollars per person, um, five dollars per canned item. Uh, the last time we did this in twenty-twenty-three, it resulted in a total of two thousand one hundred and ten dollars being reduced from fines from the books of different people within the community, but also nine hundred pounds of food for the kids packs that go home after school with the kids. We reached out to Food Share and they asked to do a February event, wanted to kind of get through the holidays, and asked us to do this in February, um, when the need was greater for the community. Um, these canned goods cannot be used for any restitution payments. Anything that's directly owed to a business or to a person cannot be waived. Um, we often do things such as, um, credit for jail time, credit for community service, um, credit for treatment programs. So this is just one of the opportunities that the lower courts have to give credit and, um, have a little bit more public interaction. I think Commissioner Reed had asked the last time for just updates, so that's kind of the update from the twenty-twenty-three program, and we're looking forward to it. We will have sites at Vans, at Super One, and the Justice Court. We are down a clerk member at municipal court, so we will not be collecting directly at municipal court, but they will at Justice Court and the two, um, supermarkets. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Judge Peterson. I love this program. I love the update. Thank you. Do you know how many people are represented in the two thousand dollars worth?
I do not. Um, it was a max of a hundred dollars last time, um, but I, I was at Vans for most of the day the last time we did it, and, um, some people brought in enough for a hundred dollars, some people didn't, so I'm not positive.
It's okay. I'm, I'm just, it's a great, great program. Thank you for the update. I look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Bless you. Uh, Your Honor, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here today. Um, when is the deadline for this? When does it, the, does it wrap up at the end of February?
No, we have it set for just a single day, um, this Friday, so we'll be there from, I believe, I go at noon, so noon to three, but I believe it starts at eight at all three locations, and it will be manned by Justice Court staff, municipal court staff, and the judges throughout the day in the different locations. All of the judges are going out and making sure that we're at spots throughout the day just to make sure we have that public interaction as well.
Okay, I believe you're looking for consensus, uh, Manager Burton.
Mayor, if, uh, if there is consensus among the Commission, we'll proceed with the program.
Commissioners?
Sure.
You do have consensus. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Mayor, and with your permission, I would also invite, uh, Amanda Opitz, our Grants Coordinator, up to give, uh, a report on one of the Commission grants.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Burton, um, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, today we received in writing notice from Rocky Mountain Development Council that they will be withdrawing from the, our dream, our Redeemers Affordable Housing Project. Uh, this group was awarded one point five eight million dollars through the Community A Grant Program. That funding was made available through general fund savings that we received, um, through the ARPA program. So, um, at this time, the funding will, uh, move back into reserves, and it is our intention to continue to have the discussion with the Commission through the budget cycle on what to do with those dollars.
So, um, uh, Manager Burton, um, so what happens? What next? Because if they're pulling back, uh, where is the project?
Uh, the, Mayor, I don't, uh, I, I think that there are still some participants that want to do some form of a project. It's not what was originally presented, I think, by the Commission. Uh, Rocky Mountain Development Council, a longtime strategic partner of ours, put a lot of work and effort into this, and, uh, just couldn't get it across the finish line, and not for a lack of, of trying.
Okay.
Uh, so I think, uh, what would be next, Mayor, is we'll engage the Commission through the budget process and take direction from you as to what your wishes are from a whole list of, of activities, I'm sure.
Thank you. Commissioners, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms., uh, Administrator Opitz. Will, is it possible to get an update on some of the other projects in the next couple of months, just to see where we are? And if, if possible, if RMDC is interested in, um, any other information about the project or, or what happened, I personally would, would love to hear a bit more because it sounds like if there is still interest in it at all, it might be useful to get an update if they are willing to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Reed, we'd be happy to provide that information.
Any other comments for Manager Burton? Are you? Thank you, Administrator Opitz.
Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
You bet. Communications from Helena Citizens Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Um, I'm Katie. I'm from, uh, the District Five, and tonight I don't have anything to present to the, uh, Commission.
Thank you. Consider Acceptance of Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. Deputy Public Works Director Coleman, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Thanks for having me. Are we good? Thank you for having me. Ed Coleman, Deputy Public Works Director. I'm here tonight. We're seeking acceptance for the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. There we go. Uh, so to just give a little background and a little history, in the nineteen nineties, um, Helena and Lewis and Clark County closed their existing landfills. Um, Helena had Centennial Park was our landfill, and Lewis and Clark County had the scratch gravel landfill out by Mill Road in Green Meadow. Um, we formed an integrated solid waste master, or a solid waste system, uh, where Helena owned the transfer station and the county owned the landfill. In twenty-fourteen, in order to make things work a little better, uh, the city agreed to manage the landfill, um, all county scratch gravel waste, which is the basic surrounding area of Helena, that all also went through the transfer station so that we could work to, um, establish, uh, adequate funding and share costs. Um, as far as city services currently, just giving you a current state, um, it includes residential solid waste, which is about twelve thousand households. Commercial solid waste, we do, um, approximately six hundred and fifty businesses, which includes waste pickup as well as cardboard recycling. Um, we have recycling at the transfer station of a lot of different types of recyclables plus seven satellite sites. Uh, we have landfill monitoring at Centennial Park, and then we contract with private entities that provide the public, uh, with subscription curbside services, uh, for a fee. So, um, to give you an overview as to why we were doing the plan, was really our goal was to create an efficient, comprehensive system. Um, really what we were trying to do was take a hard look at what we currently have going on, figure out ways to improve that system and provide citizens, um, you know, pretty much identify areas for improvement and give them the best bang for the buck is really what we were looking for. The need bakes, breaks down to, we have aging infrastructure like everything else, and we have a growing population. It's a bad combination, um, and we need to be looking towards the future. So instead of waiting for something to happen, uh, this master plan helps us be proactive. Um, so the, if you look at the last bullet, um, the, the master plan really provides a long-term strategy and is intended to guide future solid waste program development and implementation. It, it's not perfect, do A then B then C. It's, it's a guide, it's a strategy. So anyway, so just to talk about the process, and this is where we get more into the acceptance of it. Um, about two years ago in January twenty-two, uh, we formed a stakeholder-based, um, steering committee, which included a city and county commissioner. Commissioner Logan was kind enough to serve on it from our side. We had public works representatives. We had, uh, board members. We had citizens at large, and we had, uh, pri- a private contractor who does the curbside contracting. He represented the private entities that we're in partnership with. Um, so the first thing we did was we hired a consultant to help us develop this plan. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, uh, we created a survey to try to figure out, you know, what the general public thought we were doing well, thought we weren't doing well. And we came up with a twenty-five question survey that hopefully you all remember that survey, and we sent it out to approximately twenty-five thousand residences for, in both the city and the county, and it went out to the county people as a postcard with a Q R code, and it went out in, in city billing. Um, throughout the entire process, uh, we also advertised it physically in, in specific locations. We also had a site on the Be Heard Helena page throughout the process. We held public meetings during milestones for development of the survey, at the end of the survey, at drafts. We had recordings on the website. Um, we met with, uh, Helena Citizens Council. We published several it is, iterations of the draft master plan. We had multiple comment periods, and so, um, we've presented our, our consultant, who is Great West, they presented to individual commissions as well as in joint commission sessions. And so here we are towards the end of this process, and we're looking for the Commission to accept the document as, as kind of our guidance moving forward, and I'll get more into that. Um, so really what, what we found out through all of this effort, you know, which is great as a government entity, is that the, the respondents, the people that actually spoke to us throughout this process, they were pretty happy with status quo. They liked what they're doing, they're, they liked our services, um, they liked how things were. Um, you know, every, there's obviously outliers, but you know, the only concerns are, the concerns that we consistently heard, um, were about increased costs associated with newer additional services. But overall, everybody was, was pretty happy. Uh, the concepts that came out of the master plan, um, were, uh, were to, you know, obviously there's some capital improvements associated with it, and those were evaluated for potential efficiencies associated with cost savings, productivity, and we get back to services and sustainability. You know, we have, um, we have goals for diversion. We also have the, the Strategic Plan for Waste Reduction, which played a role in this, you know, that we were looking at how do we divert additional waste? We kept that in mind throughout this whole process. And so some of the areas, just looking at the bigger picture, were, you know, upgrades the existing transfer station infrastructure. Once again, it's aging, it's small, we get a lot of traffic through there. I think one year we had a hundred and eighty-eight thousand vehicle trips through the transfer station, so we looked, we're looking into, uh, construction of container sites in the county that would not only do recycling, but, uh, you could add green waste, and you could even potentially, uh, drop trash off. Um, and, uh, so that would reduce traffic at the transfer station and provide, uh, convenience for county residents, upgrades to count composting operations. Um, one of the things that we found through both the strategic plan and this is compost is our low hanging fruit for diversion rates. Um, if we actually get co- or green waste out of the waste stream, that would give us a great leap towards our diversion goals, and also be local waste where we're generating something with a beneficial use that could also be used locally. Um, we also looked into collections assessment is another thing. You know, are we, are routes efficient and effective? Permit system evaluation, you know, is the three thousand pounds in the assessment accurate? Recycling options? Is curb side collection and the satellite sites and how we're doing things now, is that right? These are all things that we need to look into, you know, a little bit harder, a little bit closer, but kind of laid it on the table as a menu of, of concepts and options we need to look into. Um, and for those of you who have been following this, click this. Um, we did, uh, present at the December third joint commission meeting, and, uh, there were a couple of comments that were made. There is a concern expressed about the, well, there's been concerns expressed a couple of times about having a truck storage and maintenance building at the transfer station adjacent to Carroll just because of exhaust and trucks coming in and out of there, um, and having regular storage there. So we changed that in the master plan because, you know, we, we heard you, uh, you know, and we want to be good neighbors. So we changed that to, and we also want to be able to have a building that's large enough to house a growing fleet of garbage trucks. So, um, so we, we changed that so it would be at an under, undetermined location, but we still need a building there if we want to continue to grow our recycling efforts. And so that turned into a recycling consolidation building with the hopes of having a bayler, a conference room, and a locker room for our guys so they're not eating lunch up on the tipping floor because it's kind of dirty and not super sanitary up there. And the reason why we're here is we're asking for acceptance. There's a lot of different recommendations in the master plan document. We're not asking for you to approve those recommendations. That's not where we're going. We're gonna, we need to really come up with a, a plan. You know, the, the master plan's kind of a menu. You can have bacon, you can have eggs, but maybe we want to wait on the pancakes for another day. You know, so, um, so we'll be coming back with those ideas once we have a good game plan, they're thoroughly vetted, and you'll hear about those as individual projects, um, or there'll be capital improvement projects in the budget process, or there'll be, you know, currently we're waiting to hear back on the SWIFER grant where we looked for, um, we're hoping to get money for additional composting equipment as well as recycling equipment, but we don't know exactly how grants are doing these days. Um, so anyway, so really, we're asking for just acceptance of the master plan as a guidance document. It's what it is. Um, we'll have further discussions about actions moving forward, budget items, things like that. So with that, I just ask if you have any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have, uh, two questions. Um, first one is, well, fir- first, thank you for all the work that went into this because you ran through all of it very quickly at the beginning, but it was, I mean, you guys did a ton on this and I'm really grateful. Um, in the plan, in a number of different spots, it talks about, um, more, um, financial analysis that's needed on various recommendations that are in the plan or various, um, projects. And then also a couple other, um, references to, um, more developed capital improvement plans. And, I mean, I think we see this in a lot of the studies. It's like, gives you a number of other things to study, which can sometimes be frustrating, but also good to highlight where our gaps are. Um, one of the things I'm wondering is that when we start seeing some of these projects come during the budget cycle, are we able to do almost like mini fiscal analyses on some of these projects as we go? And the reason I ask is that in the past, we've had some situations where we want to undertake some larger projects, but we put them on hold or they don't ever come to fruition because we haven't done like the full analysis on all of the things of a whole system. And, um, I'm just curious if maybe we can like piecemeal some of it in terms of getting some of these low hanging fruit accomplished without having to go out and spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on additional studies.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, uh, thank you. That's a, a great question. Uh, so what I would say there is, is part of the issue is, is that, and what, what they reference is the cost of service analysis.
Yeah.
In several of the items. And we didn't want to pay the consultant to try to figure out how to pay for this stuff because they don't really know the ins and outs of our budget.
Yeah.
Especially when our, uh, a lot of our budget is potentially shared with the county. And, um, so before we come to the Commission with our budget, we're going to know how we're going to pay for these things. So, yes, there is an opportunity for further fiscal analysis, but if we're going to come to you and say, we want to put in new scale houses and a new roadway in the transfer station to help traffic flow and get people in and out faster, we're going to know how we're going to pay for that, and that's going to be part of that discussion.
Okay, awesome. That's really helpful. Um, and then my second question was, um, the information about more diversion opportunities in terms of the green waste was really interesting. Um, and I know that there's a couple of communities around the state that have started moving to things like, um, like green waste, um, bins at their, you know, at your home or, um, at different times of the month, doing that kind of pickup. Do you think that we can, since you noted that as like some of the low hanging fruit, do you think that we can expect to see some, um, like potential requests for investments in reducing some of that, um, yard waste in this budget cycle?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean.
Not to put you on the spot.
Uh, I think that's going to be a wonderful discussion when we have it. I, I, I think that, um, I looked over at Tim, Tim to see if he was staring at me, um, but I, I, I think we need to have that discussion at an administrative meeting before we come before you with anything because sure, it would be great to have those bins and those services, but everything comes at a cost.
Definitely.
So, you know, what, what do we, what do we want to do?
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's where I will, I would rather- You know, so that, that's where I will, I would rather have that discussion at administrative meeting where we, we can talk in detail.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Mr. Coleman and all of Public Works, both city and county staff that were in attendance as a commission representative on the steering committee. I can say there was a lot of work that went into this. I think it was a very robust effort amongst the steering committee itself, who was, was a pretty interesting cross section of staff and the public. And there was some pretty frank discussion about our system. There was great, as Mr. Coleman outlined, there was great public outreach throughout this process. And to try to get public input, which is, you know, can be quite challenging on any matter. But, you know, we got a really good financial analysis of our system upfront from Ms. Anderson. Staff gave us a tour of the system. And if you've never been on a tour of our solid waste system, I would encourage it. It's, it was, as I remember, an all day affair. And it's pretty impressive of what the system accomplishes. And, and so just like to say, thanks. Very supportive of adopting this master plan. And again, very appreciative of all the work that went into it. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Ben Kuiper. I'm the Chair of the Helena Citizens Council. I just wanted to quickly mention for the record that in April of 2024, we considered a recommendation regarding the specific policies of the master plan. Since you're not considering those tonight, I'll just leave it at the HCC has general support of this plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the master plan.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to accept the 2024 Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Shirtlith.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider passing a resolution of intention authorizing the city to quit claim the property legally described below to the Helena Regional Airport Authority upon final approval of the city commission. Attorney Pettish, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I'm Matthew Pettish from the City Attorney's Office. And I'm here today to talk to you about a property that is approximately 12.78 acres and generally located between the airport road and the Burlington Northern Railroad. This property is legally described in the memo that you were given as well as the resolution of intention that's in your packet that has also been posted on the city website. I won't read the entire thing to you just because it's a little overwhelming and overbearing, I think, for everyone. But it is also depicted on certificate of survey number 293056. I think it was last week I came to the admin meeting and discussed this property with you. It's a former gravel pit that has no present or future use as far as the city is concerned. We've talked to department heads and they're all in consensus that there's just no use for this property as far as the city is concerned. And the Helena Airport Authority, which was created by the city and county and is a political subdivision of the city, came to the city and asked about acquiring this. The airport authority would like to utilize the property to create leverage so that they can protect the general airport area and then maybe utilize this property in a potential land swap, which would be a like-for-like exchange at some point in the future. Jeff Wady Camper, who is from the airport authority, he is here today. And he can speak more specifically to what the airport authority plans on doing with this property if we were to eventually transfer it to them. And with that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Pettish. Commissioners. Do we have any public comments on this topic? You told me you were not here for that.
I lied. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and staff, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Jeff Wady Camper. I'm the Director of the Helena Regional Airport Authority. And yeah, just a little background into how this kind of got going. We, for many years, you know, the property, we've been looking at the properties all around the airport campus. You know, as the old adage goes, they don't, they're not making any more property. And so, you know, we've been cognizant of that, looking at the airport campus and wanting to protect it and make sure that we can continue to grow and do everything to make the airport the best possible airport it can be for all the different aviation uses. And so this property on the south side that, that we're talking about there, there's, there's several sections of different ownership. And we've been working with those owners on acquiring some of that land. And so we, we had asked, we've noticed for, for a while that that odd shaped gravel pit is out there that the city owns. And so I had asked City Manager Tim Burton about it. And just because we were wondering if there was some plans with that, because it kind of sits in the center. And so that's kind of how the discussion got started. And I sincerely appreciate all the work that Tim and staff have done with this. But we actually have a signed buy-sell agreement for an adjacent property that's about 84 acres that we're moving forward with there. And our idea for that whole section is basically, as I mentioned, to protect the, it does a number of things. It protects the airport so you don't get any incompatible uses that conflict with the airport, whether it's, you know, complaints about noise and things like that. But at the same time, that's really one of the few areas the airport can continue to grow. And we see a lot of growth in avi, in the aviation sector and different things. Aircraft hangars, aircraft manufacturing, different things like that. So it's a really logical place in our mind to expand the airport in the future. I think the folks probably, you know, 50 years from now would look back and be happy that we acquired that because there's really nowhere else to move the airport to, and we surely don't want to do that at some point in time. So that's kind of how we got to where this is at. And again, I sincerely appreciate the airport commissioners and staff. And I appreciate you taking a look at this and, you know, considering it. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any other questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other, oh, Commissioners, any questions? Do we have any other public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I recommend passing a resolution of intention authorizing the city to quit claim the property with the legal description listed in this memorandum and in the resolution of intention.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtlith.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider an ordinance that changes the zoning in Peak Phase 1 MVM from RU to R4, War Eagle Street, Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Let me just get the presentation set up since we are having some technical issues tonight. All right. As you can see, I'm not Planner Alvarez. I apologize. He's enjoying tropical weather and last night's Eagles win. So with that, tonight, you're being asked to consider a zone change for some of the land in the Peak Phase 1 portion of the Mountain View Meadows subdivision. Apologies, I'm a little, I've got a cold. So the area in question with the present zone change is bordered in red. In the vicinity map that's on that screen, it kind of looks like a hook shaped piece of property along War Eagle Street, generally located between Eloise Cobell and Peaks Avenue. Currently, there is a range of different zones present here. We have RU residential urban, R2 residential, and B2 general commercial zoning. I do just want to preface this presentation for this item for first passage of the ordinance for the zone change by stating that after this presentation, you'll also have a public hearing for the southern portion of the Peak subdivision, so just south of where this is being considered. That would change the zoning down there to R4 and RU respectively for different areas. I wanted to bring this up because one of the things that you'll hear about in this presentation is a staff recommendation versus what the applicant has requested for the zoning on this land. And one of the factors that went into the creation of the staff recommendation is traffic impact. And the reason I want to preface this conversation by noting that is that with the subsequent zone change that you'll be considering for final passage this evening, there is anticipated to be a reduction of vehicle trips per day for that area of close to 2,500. So I'm just putting that out there. So you have that for context for this conversation, for this first passage item. And also related to that, at the time that Planner Alvarez actually crafted the staff report for this item, the applicant had been willing to consider R3 zoning in lieu of the R4 that was in their original application. However, subsequent to that, there was a conversation among city staff and the applicant about engineering and design standards that would impact their development proposals. And I do just want to state, zone changes, as you know, are not based on the end use that a developer has plans for. It is about its context within the wider neighborhood and the other factors that are considered as part of the zone change processed. But what was, what ultimately they're looking to develop, they would have needed a 40-foot curb cut for the duplexes that they're going to be building side by side that would have a shared driveway. And the R3 district, within the engineering and design standards, so separate from zoning code, would only allow them for a 30-foot width. So that is just something I wanted to share as well on behalf of Planner Alvarez. So again, the applicant seeking a zone change to R4 for the areas that are along War Eagle noted in this picture below. This is not out of alignment with the other zoning surrounding this area within the Mountain View Meadows subdivision. I should note, though, with regard to the staff recommendation for R3 zoning, that zone is also present in Mountain View Meadows. It's just not immediately adjacent to this area. It would, in either event, whether it's R4 or R3, ultimately, the developer is looking to put multiple dwelling units on each of the three parcels that are affected here. And I should also note too that for this area and for the subsequent final passage proposal, as is noted in the novice memos for each item, these areas were recently replatted last year. And the change in plating doesn't really reflect the zoning that was on the books, which long predates the change in the plot. So now they're just changing things with the change in market demands for the development. When you're reviewing a zone change, there is certain criteria that you have to evaluate. And we have to look to Montana Code Annotated 762304, which sets forth the criterion guidelines for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be made in accordance with a growth policy and be designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety and the general welfare, and also facilitate the adequate provision of city services, in short. The adoption, in the adoption of zoning regulations, the governing body, i.e. yourselves, shall consider reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, compatible urban growth, the character of its, the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. So with that said, as I mentioned, there are existing, three existing zoning districts on the ground here and two that are being proposed, one by staff, one by the applicant themselves. I'm going to focus on this slide for the two that are being proposed. So staff's recommendation is tied to the R3 residential district, which in essence allows for a mix of residential development types, meaning different housing needs, while also allowing for a very limited offering of compatible non-residential uses. Whereas R4, which is known as the residential office district, with the office portion of its name being critical here, allows for a higher density of residential uses with professional and business offices and associated service uses. And this is just a snapshot from the 2019 growth policy, future land use map, that shows the area in question. So if you look to the areas that are part of the hook that I'm showing with the cursor here, you can see that it's split between mixed use and urban. So what do those different designations mean in the growth policy? Well, mixed use is quite simply areas where people can work, live, play, and learn. So there is a wider array of compatible uses, be they residential, commercial, public, or what have you. It is a much higher density development with a very comprehensive pattern of development where uses aren't necessarily segregated as might be the case in, say, residential predominant districts. The urban designation, however, allows for moderate to high density residential uses with far more limited non-residential uses. It allows for compatible public uses and open lands. And also allows for commercial developments that are relatively small or low intensity in scale. And as far as conformance with the goals and objectives of the growth policy are concerned, this is just a listing of those that have been found to be consistent with both this proposal and the subsequent one tonight. And as far as traffic is concerned in the neighborhood, as you all, I am sure, are well aware, Mountain View Meadows has been developed with all the necessary street components that are required by engineering and design standards. And now I want to talk about traffic generation. So again, when we in the Community Development Department review and analyze a zone change application, we are not looking at the end use that the developer is proposing. We are looking at a blend of uses that are typically found within each district and sort of weighting those against the size of the property to evaluate how many vehicle trips we estimate will be generated per day. So with this analysis that we run through, the current zoning is expected to generate 645 trips per day. Where the area, as recommended by staff to be pre-zoned, or rezoned, rather, to R3, it's expected to decrease down to approximately 379 vehicle trips per day. The R4 zoning designation that the applicant is seeking is expected to generate just shy of 1,600. So that is an increase of about 900 trips per day, give or take. As far as review internally amongst other departments on this proposal, the application was recommended to be approved by other departments for those that did weigh in on the application. Do you want to note on behalf of Planner Alvarez that when he sent the review out to those different departments, they were analyzing it through the lens of an R3 zoning designation rather than R4? And as regards compatibility for the zoning for this area, both the R3 and R4 arguably would be much more compatible. Pardon me, with the surrounding zoning that you see in Mountain View Meadows and immediately adjacent to these properties, the R2 and B2 do not meet that compatibility standard. And overall, it is not determined that there would be any adverse impacts with either proposed zone change for the areas in question. So for this application, legal notice was placed in the independent record in late December ahead of the January zoning commission hearing. Around that same time, neighbor notices were sent to property owners within 150 feet of the property. And there was also a sign placed on War Eagle so folks could scan a QR code and learn more about the application. To date, there haven't been any comments received regarding the zone change. According to Planner Alvarez, there were some phone calls from adjacent property owners just inquiring as to the nature of the proposal, but not expressing support or opposition to the proposal. So with that, there are two recommendations. Again, before you tonight, you have the applicant's recommendation, which was upheld by the zoning commission. They recommend approval of an ordinance in alignment with the applicant's request. And then there's the staff recommendation. So I'll start off with the applicant/ zoning commission recommendation, which is to recommend approval for first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from RU residential urban to R4 residential for the property legally described as Lot 5 of Block 26, Lot 1 of Block 21, and Lot 5 of Block 14. Changes zoning district from B2 general commercial to R4 residential for that portion of Lot 1 of Block 21. And changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R4 residential for that portion of Lot 5 of Block 26 of the Peak Phase 1 of the Crossroads and Mountain View Meadows subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Now, as far as the staff recommendations concerned, all of those statements remain the same except the recommended change is to R3 residential. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have of me. Director Brink is also available online if you have questions of him or if I am unable to answer your questions. to answer your questions. And additionally, the applicant and their representative are here tonight if you have questions for them directly.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Commissions?
Can you kick it off?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think that we might all have puzzled looks, just because this is unusual. So I, the first question, I guess, is there, is the staff's recommendation for the R3 rather than the R4 because the analysis was done for R3?
So typically, Mayor and Commissioners, when, when there are found to be 200 or more vehicle trips per day, as you might be aware from other land use cases that have come before you, the threshold for having to produce a traffic impact study is 200 vehicle trips per day. And in the present case, that was something that we were not requiring of the applicant to produce. And part of the reason is, is obviously, the changes over the course of the full development of Mountain View Meadows has changed from, I think, its original conception, and the density overall has been a lot lower. And as was mentioned at the outset, too, when we look at the other item that's coming up for final passage after this, there was a dramatic reduction in the vehicle trips per day anticipated based on the community development sort of matrix for how we calculate, quantify what the impact will be.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up question would be, I mean, is the staff recommendation for R3 rather than R4, is that like a, based on there would be huge repercussions beyond just the fact that the traffic impact study hasn't happened? Or, I mean, are the objections very strong?
Mayor Commissioners, that's not something I feel qualified really to speak to. One thing I do want to note, though, and hopefully I made this clear, and apologies if I did not, the uses that would be permitted that ultimately, again, we're not evaluating with the zone change per se, but the uses that ultimately the developer are looking to have on the ground would be allowed with either R3 or R4. It's just that with R4, because of the higher density for residential development that could occur in theory, and the fact that there are more offerings for compatible non-residential uses, the traffic impacts could be greater on a use basis alone. But again, when we do our own evaluation in community development, it's different. It draws on the same quantification methods that the transportation systems department uses. It ultimately stems from the ITE manual, but it's just a different way of viewing it because we're looking at a blend of uses rather than an individual development proposal.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also apologies, you said it early, and forgive me if I misunderstood something. If I'm understanding correctly, the original R3 was acceptable except for this one driveway issue, which is not permissible under an R3. So the whole need to change from R3 to R4 is about the width of a driveway. Is that accurate?
Mayor Commissioners, that is how I have come to understand it, yes.
Okay. And again, I'm not sure that this is possible, but is there like an exception? Can you have an R3 designation and get an exception to have a larger driveway? Or is that not an option? Does it require the full change to R4?
Mayor Commissioners, that would require, as far as I understand things, a curb cut variance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
My name is Greg Worth with Staley Engineering here on behalf of Mountain View Meadows. I'd also like to thank Mr. Alvarez, who's not here, but prepared the staff report and presented it to the zoning commission, and then Ms. Ray for presenting it tonight. So we reviewed the staff report and do request a recommendation for a zone change to R4. That was our initial request in discussing with the staff. Some departments had concerns about the traffic. We looked at the dimensional standards. The lot development would meet the dimensional standards from a zoning perspective in an R3, but there is the driveway width restriction in the engineering standards that it would not allow the proposed development. In this case, War Eagle, it's the road that goes up along the power lines at Mountain View Meadows, past Blue Cross and Blue Shield, it's, you know, steeper, 5% to 7%. So what's planned, there are duplex condos, so you put the garages in the middle to mitigate the steeper slope. So if there's duplex garages, you know, that's two 20-foot wide, you know, a 40-foot wide driveway there. So that's what's been proposed with the infrastructure plans and as we presented the information to the city. So the creating, changing it to an R3 creates another hardship of variance request subsequent of the project, you know? So, you know, that's why we went back to an R4 request for an R4 is it, it creates, it doesn't create another unnecessary step, you know, for the project, you know? So we're trying to avoid another variance request and have it, you know, basically meet the standards of the development. Everything that's been proposed, you know, it is much less dense than, you know, an R4 will allow. The steepness of the site, you know, requires some spacing between the buildings, so it just, it will not be as, the density development that R4 allows, the site just does not allow it. So it, it's been publicly advertised for an R4 zone change. The R4 provides the upzoning that's been preferred by the, and recommended by the zoning commission and also the growth policy as reviewed. The R4 is in direct alignment with the adjacent zoning and is more appropriate. You know, at the zoning commission, it was noted from the staff that aside from the transportation issues, the R4 is appropriate for, for the site.
You want to start wrapping up?
Excuse me. As noted, the city commission did approve the R4 for the southern portion of the project. I will speak briefly on traffic if you, if you let me. You know, Mountain View Meadows, we do yearly traffic counts in September. So we did a yearly traffic count in September of 2024. The total traffic on Crossroads Parkway, which is the stoplight coming out of Mountain View Meadows from Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's the primary entrance in the Mountain View Meadows. The total trips were 2,300 vehicle trips per day, you know? And that does not account for the amount of, you know, doesn't differentiate the amount of construction traffic that you see up there from all the skilled trades going up and do the home building, or, you know, the contribution from Blue Cross Blue Shield. You know, the trip generation based on the, you know, actual residents, Mountain View Meadows just celebrated their 500th residence. And, you know, 2,300, based on 500, that's 4.6 trips per day. The projected trips are expected to be noticeably less than the 200 calculated, you know, for 4.6 trips times 44 condos, condo units. You know, for comparison, the ITE trip generation calculations that's, that the staff has used and industry uses is 9.5 trips per day for a single-family residence. So you can see that, you know, the trips we see locally are just much less than, than the industry standards. So the calculator trips are exaggerated. You know, if you review the site at Crossroads Parkway at the entrance in the Mountain View Meadows, there are very little traffic constraints. So we do request a recommendation for approval for the zone change to R4.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, so we, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm going to recommend approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from RU Residential Urban to R4 for the property legally described as Lot 5 of Block 26, Lot 1 of Block 21, Lots 5 of Block 14. Changes the zoning district from B2 Commercial to R4, I don't think I've got the parenthetical correctly, residential, but to R4 for that portion of Lot 1, Block 21. And changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to R4 for that portion of Lot 5 of Block 26 of the Peaks Phase 1 of the Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Planner Ray, I know you're back. Consider an ordinance that changes the zoning in Peaks Phase 1 MVM from R2 and B2 to RU and R4 Peaks Avenue area.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This one will go faster, given everything all the grammar covered with the last presentation, I promise. So again, as you noted, this is final passage of an ordinance to amend the southern reaches of the Peaks portion of the Mountain View Meadows subdivision. This is a vicinity map of the area in question. You can see it is predominantly zoned R2 currently with a little bit of RU thrown in and a chunk of B2. The area is generally located along Peaks Edge Street from and including Caillou's Avenue to War, pardon me, War Eagle Street, along Peaks Avenue from War Eagle Street to Franco Parkway, and including Lounchee Loop, Lounchee Street, Crow Peak Avenue, and Mount Baldy Street. The applicant is seeking, pardon me, rezoning these areas to RU Residential and R4 Residential Office. Both districts are in alignment with the zoning that exists in the surrounding area and the uses therein. The purpose of the RU district, different from what we've already heard tonight, is basically allows for no setback requirements. So the dimensional standards are lesser in this district than in the other ones, but it does only allow you, from a residential development standpoint, to have single or two-dwelling unit residential uses on each lot. We've discussed the R4 district, but it would allow for multifamily housing and compatible non-residential uses. And just going back, the previous slide showed a depiction of the area being predominantly RU with a patch of R4, so they can have single-family and duplex units and then a area that is multifamily. We've already talked at length about various zoning district intent statements tonight, but the ones that are at play here, again, the applicant seeking are for residential office, which we've discussed, that allows for higher density residential development with some compatible office-type uses, and the RU district that allows for single and duplex residential structures, as well as a similar mix, pardon me, of professional and business offices and the associated service uses. The designation from the 2019 growth policy future land use map for this area is urban. It is squarely urban in this case, as you can see here, there is no split. As mentioned previously, when looking at the goals and objectives of the 2019 growth policy, the same goals and objectives apply here as with the last application. The same statutory criteria from Montana Code annotated is the lens through which you are to consider the zone change request. As stated already, this, the growth policy designates this area as urban on the future land use map, which allows for, again, predominantly moderate to high-density residential uses, compatible public land uses and open space, as well as some small and low-intensity commercial activities. With what's proposed, the scale that's proposed for development with R4 and RU is higher density residential zone types, which is wholly in keeping with that urban designation. This area, from a transportation standpoint, equally well-served with city services. Vehicle trips per day, as I mentioned in the last presentation, would be dramatically reduced based on the Community Development Department calculation for land uses with the R4 and RU designation. So with the zoning that currently exists on the ground, there's over 6,000 trips generated a day. And with the proposed zoning, it is closer to 3,700 trips per day. So part of the reason for the huge change there is because of the higher-intensity commercial activities that can occur in the B2 district, probably the largest of which would be a drive-through restaurant, which produces very high traffic volumes. So that is calculated in those findings. Again, staff from other departments were given an opportunity to weigh in on this application. All recommended approval as proposed. As regards compatible zoning, this application is wholly consistent with the 2019 growth policy, and the zones proposed are much more in keeping with the growth policy and surrounding uses developed to date. There aren't expected to be any adverse impacts with this proposal either, as with the last one. Legal notice for this proposal was placed in the IR at the end of November for the zoning commission hearing in December. Again, just with the last proposal, adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the subject area were issued neighbor notices, and a sign was placed at the intersection of Peaks Ave and War Eagle Street. No comments were received in writing to Planner Alvarez for this application. There were, I believe, two public comments in opposition at the zoning commission hearing. I think it was just misunderstandings generally about district use allowances and the district dimensional standards for the RU district. So with all that said, the recommended motion before you tonight is to move to approve final passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to RU Residential Urban for the property legally described as Lot 6 and 18 through 25 in Block 26, Lots 1 through 3, 4A, 5A, 6 through 9 in Block 48, Lots 1 through 9 in Block 49, Lots 1 and 2 in Block 50, Lots 1 through 17 in Block 51, Lots 1 through 4 in Block 54, Lots 1 through 7 in Block 55. Changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to R4 Residential Office for the property legally described as Lots 1 through 2 in Block 53. Changes the zoning district from B2 General Commercial to RU Residential Urban for the property legally described as Lot 16 through 26 in Block 28. And changes the zoning district from B2 General Commercial and R2 Residential to R4 Residential Office for the property legally described as Lots 1 through 2 in Block 52 of the Peaks Phase 1 of the Crossroads of Mountain View Meadows subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And with that, I will happily entertain any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So Ms. Ray, staff's recommendation is the same as the applicant's.
Mayor and Commissioner, in this case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. Greg Worth with Staley Engineering, and nothing to add other than thank you to Mr. Alvarez and Ms. Ray for preparing the staff report. And this is the second and final passage, so just note that at the last city commission meeting on the 13th of January, it was unanimously approved, so we should be done here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Madam Clerk, any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, fight for it.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending the City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to RU Residential Urban for the property legally described as Lot 6 in 18 through 25 in Block 26, Lots 1 through 3, 4A, 5A, 6 through 9 in Block 48, Lots 1 through 9 in Block 49, Lots 1 and 2 in Block 50, Lots 1 through 17 in Block 51, Lots 1 through 4 in Block 54, Lots 1 through 7 in Block 55. Changes the zoning district from R2 Residential to R4 Residential Office for the property legally described as Lots 1 through 2 in Block 53. Changes the zoning district from B2 Commercial to RU Residential Urban for the property legally described as Lots 16 through 26 in Block 28. And changes the zoning district from B2 Commercial to R2 Residential, oh, and R2 Residential, to R4 Residential Office for the property legally described as Lots 1 through 2 in Block 52 of the Peaks Phase 1 of the Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Commissioners, any finer? This meeting is adjourned.